We're back in action. Do I need to repeat?
No. Item number nine?
Item, item number nine. Patrick?
This is a proposition that, let me, first let me preface that all of these election propositions, we're in kind of a little bit of a jam here because typically we would have had until September the 10th to get a res- election resolution to the election board. But because we have to provide notice of an election 60 days in advance of an election to the election board if we're going to have one, except that rule changes when there's a state election. And when Senator, State Senator Brinkley resigned and the governor called for an election in November, then because of federal statutes and the need to, to get absentee ballots to overseas military, that changed to 75 days in advance notice of an election, which put the notice to the election board having to be made with an election resolution from Bixby on Wednesday, the 26th. So we lost two weeks. So with that preface, if we have these needs that are to be submitted to the voters, I think there's, there's definitely an emergency for the benefit of the citizens to have the emergency clause attached to each of these. And so what we have, what I also have done is I've placed, I've placed a number of items on the agenda on dealing with sales tax, some of which will be maybe unnecessary, particularly if the council determines to pass item number nine tonight, then items 10 and 11 will, will not need to be passed because 10 and 11 were submitted to the council in case they wanted to split the issues in number nine. And right now, I'm recommending that the council adopt number nine because I think it's probably good to decrease the number of, of issues on the ballot. And it's certainly a legitimate reason, there's legitimate reasons to have that all in one proposition. I would point out that the steps are for the council to adopt ordinances, to adopt the sales tax, subject to a vote of the people. So another phrase that is common, commonly used here, the decision is not the council to decide whether the taxes will be imposed under state law. It is a decision to be made by the people. A decision of the people, by the people, and for the people, as people like to say here. And so the council's vote is not imposing a tax. It is simply submitting the issue to the voters on whether a tax should be imposed on themselves. Now, item number, this agenda item number-
Nine.
Nine would be ordinance number 2164 if it passes. And it would repurpose the, well, let me get, I've got these items confused here. It would repurpose the existing sales tax that is currently dedicated to debt service to allow some of those monies to be used for capital improvements and parks. I don't know if I can elaborate, or maybe Jared, if you want to elaborate. I don't want to steal any kind of thunder if you want to, Jared. But you want me to proceed?
Sure.
Okay. So the, the-
I thought it enough.
This particular ordinance would repurpose the .25% sales tax that's now being used for debt service of the City of Bixby and the Bixby Public Works Authority. And it would allow .1% of that 25% to be used for debt service, as I previously stated. And additionally, that .10% could be used for capital improvements. The same proposition that you would be voting on in this ordinance would have .15% of that .25% go to, for the purpose of operating, maintaining, and improving public parks and recreation facilities. And it will also allow those taxes to remain permanent on and after January 1, 2016. So that's the ordinance that would, I think, be number 2164 if it passes. And I submitted to the council for approval for submission to the voters.
We've had this discussion. Do you need to add anything else? Or does anyone on council wish to add anything else? And does this, okay, this, did this have the time you took? This was permanent?
This would become permanent as of January 1, 2016 if the voters approve it in November.
Okay. Any other discussion? Anybody? Jared, anyone out there want to talk?
Unless we have any other questions to follow up with what our previous discussion-
Let's have a motion. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I second it.
Bottom mount?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Stewart?
No.
Guthrie?
Yes.
And Easton?
Yes.
And on the same item, it also has an emergency clause. And I think I've already explained why I believe it's important for an emergency clause.
Now, there is an emergency here. There is a true emergency.
The law would require a separate vote on that emergency clause.
So it is?
It really is, Ron.
Is, is there an item number for the emergency?
It is, and within the same item. It is-
So we need another vote?
I've moved the emergency clause to, to item nine.
Thank you.
Second.
Bottom mount?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Guthrie?
Yes.
And Easton?
Yes.
With that, I would ask that we pull items 10 and 11, since they have already been included in that.
Pull. Item number 12, consider and take action on ordinance number 2165, levying and assessing a sales tax of three tenths of 1% for the purpose of constructing and maintaining improvements in facilities, all for enhancement in economic development within the Bixby Downtown River Corridor and declaring an EMREGency. Maybe nobody will pick up on it.
Could we separate the emergency from it?
The emergence, the emergency clause is always separate.
Okay.
So it's a second vote?
The law requires you to vote on it separately.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so this particular tax, I think, has been discussed and certainly presented by the Assistant City Manager well here as to what it would be for. It is for improvements in the Downtown River Corridor District as was described by the city manager, Assistant City Manager. And it would allow for the constructing, reconstructing, improving, and remodeling, repairing, and operating, maintaining public and private improvements of facilities, possibly acquiring properties and right-of-way within the Downtown River Corridor. And also would allow, if the council wants, for bonds to be issued to finance some of those improvements, should it not want to wait to pay it while the sales tax comes in. This one would have a, an effective date of January 1, 2017, which is when the 2025 tax expires. And it, this would expire in 20 years, December 31st, on 2037, if enacted by the council and approved by the voters of the City of Bixby in November. And with that, I would recommend approval of that ordinance.
Discussion.
This is the three tenths of-
Point three percent.
Three tenths.
From the existing 2025.
Existing 2025.
For another 20 years.
Yes, sir.
Now we get to use it instead of the council.
Okay. No discussion. Do we have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Stewart, I mean, King?
Yes.
Bottom mount?
Yes.
Stewart?
No.
Guthrie?
Yes.
And Easton?
Same agenda item.
Easton.
Easton.
Oh, yes. Same agenda item. Do we have a motion for the, to attach the emergency clause?
I motion to pass the emergency clause.
Second. I'll second.
Stewart.
We're agreeing on something here.
Oh, I know.
Oh, wow.
Somebody want to write that down?
Yes.
Wait, it's a cold day somewhere.
Stewart.
Yes.
And Easton.
Yes.
Bottom mount?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
And Guthrie?
Yes.
I was saying no just when I-
Item number 13. Consider and take action on ordinance number 2166, levying and assessing a sales tax of 2,500 to 1% for the purpose of providing revenue for employing, training, and equipping additional City of Bixby police, fire, and street department personnel, and declaring an emergency.
This particular ordinance would capture .25% of, if I got that right? I'm kind of getting punchy here. .25% of the existing- existing 2025 sales tax. And the stated purpose of this is for, is to provide revenue for employing, training, and equipping additional City of Bixby police, fire, and street department personnel. And it would be effective, again, January 1, 2017, if approved by the council and the voters. And it would be permanent on and after that date. Obviously, if we're employing new personnel, we don't want the, that revenue source to expire and have to lay them off. So I recommend approval of this so it can be submitted to voters.
Discussion.
I just wanted to say something really quick, Mayor. And when I, when I ran for city council over a year and a half ago, there was a good friend of mine, and still I consider him a good friend, came to me and gave me a slogan, "A responsible city government", which to explain why sometimes I, I vote no on things. It's not because I'm no. I know that's kind of what people make fun of me, Dr. No, or four to one. I, I, I hear it, I get it. But the, the issue is, I care very deeply about public safety because I, I did it and served side by side by our public safety professionals. We're all family. And one of the things that, in coming in here is, this accomplishes exactly what I had a vision to do, was increase our public safety staffing, which is a good thing. We were able to do some increases through the budget. It's definitely not enough to keep up with our population. But we're reactionary. Again, I don't think it's fair that we go to the citizens and want to tax them for something that we should already have planned and provided for. And that's no one's fault here, sitting up here on this council. This plan, this problem was in effect long before we got here. There's one person I respect up here just as much or more than anybody. You know, whenever the police had their backs up against the wall, at that time, Councilman Easton came in and he said, "I'll always support you guys and stand with you." That meant a lot to me. I was in the middle of building a house then. And, and with the prospect of being laid off, that kind of scared me. But you stood with us and for us. And it really impassioned me and inspired me to want to become a councilman and to stand with public safety. But we had, we have an issue where our city, to me, as a former public safety employee, I just felt that, that we're only priority in words and not actions. And you show your priority by making some budgetary sacrifices for public safety. And whenever we had a surplus to pay for a fireman that we so desperately needed and just decided not to, I feel like it's disingenuous to go before the people and say, "Hey, we need a public safety tax," when our city administration has failed to show the desire to actually invest in public safety. And so that's why I'm going to oppose this, and that's all I'm going to say about it. But I never got to publicly thank you for supporting us back then, Mayor. So thank you very much.
Thank you for those words.
Jared, there, there was a number on this year's budget. You know, every year, we, we keep going with what we've had in the past and when there's new dollars that come in from increased sales tax. Those new dollars have to be figured out from council. Where do they go? And the new dollars for 2015 and 16's budget, if I remember correctly, we took over 90% of those new funds and put them in the public safety. So, and, and that was consensus of everyone on this council. So this council, this last budget, put over 90% of new dollars in public safety. So I don't think anyone could say that this council has not done anything for public safety. We've done everything for public safety. So I just want to point that out.
And I've never said this council's done nothing for public safety. In fact, that was done through the budget. That was done fiscally. That was done responsibly. And I think that's, that's the path we need to take, is looking at our budget and seeing where we can invest in, into public safety through the budget, through budgetary measures, not coming to the citizens and asking them to, to fund it when they're already living here, shopping here. That's a service we should be providing.
Yeah. The, the, one thing I, the $600,000 I keep hearing about that was left over. They were, what is that we're talking?
Surplus.
The surplus. I have to admit, somehow, we probably should have looked at, at maybe one more fireman, one more policeman. I didn't know we had a $600,000 surplus until, actually, I heard, I heard about it.
I heard about it in the arbitration hearing.
Yeah.
Well, that's the firefighter speaking. I'm sure that those-
No, that was what Betty said in her testimony, Mr. Bolden.
Is Betty out there?
Is Betty, Betty there?
Betty, we're talking.
There was a $600,000 surplus.
And I have to add, those are savings. Those are not continual revenues coming in.
But we were told we didn't have it, that that, that we, because we did the 7%. And that's what, that's what generated a lot of anger in me when I left. But we, we couldn't afford it after the 7% raise, but then all of a sudden, well, we had a $600,000 surplus, and you still refused to replace that fireman at $55,000.
Okay. So, go ahead.
Betty, the $600,000 surplus is what Councilman Stewart is asking about, that testified to an arbitration.
I don't recall it being 600,000.
608, I think, was what the term was said, or what the number was thrown out there. There was a 608,000 dollar surplus. And then we just didn't add the other fireman.
Well, but some of that money is, is required to ensure that we have enough cash flow and to carry, take care of some liabilities that the city could incur on loss of revenue.
Working cap, working cap, working, right, working capital.
And you would have had $550,000 of working capital. But I, I was, I was led to believe and told, well, we just couldn't afford the other, the guy. And when I brought a proposal to amend the budget to bring the other firemen, well, no, we can't start doing that, and we really don't have it. It's like, okay, we're, okay, we're either going to replace it or not. And it just seemed like, well, it's just better to kick the can down the road and have the citizen pay for it instead of us making the decision and going, oh, we have it, you know, let's go ahead and bring them in, and we have a surplus. We put $1 million into some emergency fund for emergencies. What's the frontline workers that are going to be the frontline public safety professionals that are going to be fighting the emergencies if a natural disaster happens? And we didn't, we didn't invest in that extra fireman when we had the chance to.
So I guess back to where I was at, that's why I'm, that's why some of the stuff that we're looking at, I'm voting for, is because I can't do, I can't do nothing about what's happened already. What I can do is whatever I see ahead of me that I can go after. And to me, this is an opportunity to help the firemen, the policemen, and, and that's a big deal to me.
I agree. You know, we're not making the decision. We're given the opportunity to the citizens to make the decision. This is not whether we support it or not. But I think that if we don't support this and let the people choose, then we're doing a disservice to the people.
It's their money.
It's their money to spend. So you guys are going to be the ones that vote on it. If you decide to, or if you don't, that's up to you. You know, I think we should give you the opportunity to vote on it, though.
All right, go.
That's my stance on it. I'm not making any decision for my board or the city. Any other discussion?
No, I just want to say that I do always stand for the citizens. I always come out and want them to have a voice. But I want to be on record saying that I wasn't for this particular tax because I believe that we should be fiscally responsible. That's what I'm saying. So I hope you do. I mean, I want everyone to go out and vote in November. Everybody.
Do we have a motion?
Our motion approved.
Second.
King?
Yes.
Guthrie?
Yes.
Bottom mount?
Yes.
Stewart?
No.
Easton?
Yes.
Now we need to vote on, on the same agenda item, emergency clause. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Guthrie?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Bottom mount?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Easton?
Yes.
Item number 14. I'm confused on that one.
This is making permanent the other .25 of the parks. It's already in place.
Thought it was included.
No, that, no, it wasn't.
Okay.
Now, we're going to make, we're going to make the parks .25.
Repurposing of the debt service was included.
Consider and take act, this is item number 14. Consider and take action on ordinance number 2167, Bixby City Code Title II, Chapter 5, Title Park and Recreation Facility Sales Tax. Term, term of tax so that the tax levied shall continue and remain in effect until repealed and declaring an emergency. Discussion?
I just want to make sure that if the point comes that this park can fund itself with growth and sales tax at some point in the future, that when you say repeal, I guess that would be what you would do? And the reason why you would do that?
Right, surely.
Okay.
And I think with any of these measures, you could always come back.
Right.
We have a speaker.
Yeah. Mayor and council, just, Ron Buster, once again, just for a couple of minutes. On the light side, we heard some discussion quite a bit about the emergency clause and the plain meaning or the plain words that defines that. And I just did a little bit of quick Googling, which is a great way to do legal research. But I, just from that, from that, I, I'd like to give you some assurance that the city attorney will be able to sort through that and that you will find that you have a great deal of, and, and it's been decided in court cases and also in practice, and also through just the legal literature, that, that he'll be able to assure you of what the common ways are to use the emergency clause and its evolved beyond the plain meaning of those words. And actually, you all have a broad discretion that goes unquestioned on how to apply that. So anyway, that's on the lighter note, and I have a legal education, but I'm not practicing as anybody's attorney at this point in time. So anyway, councilor, you can do that. But, but secondly, I want to say this because it's been a long, hard night. And it's about to, this major part about these proposals is about to conclude. And, and I just wanted to thank everybody for the discussion that we heard and Jared's presentation because it's been really helpful. And I also want it not to go unnoticed that, in my, in my opinion at least, and I hope others will share it, that you all have presented proposals that are really balanced. They're balanced for, for public safety and security. And, and for, not only that, for the short term, but measures that actually pay the bills going forward and don't leave us short in a few years when you guys are out of here and the next group comes along. And that balanced with, with, and I'll use the term rather loosely, economic development and quality of life issues, whether it be around the river or down at Bixoma and Charlie Young in between, and an opportunity to redevelop our downtown. These, these things are potential huge game changers. And I'll take a step further and say, I encourage you all to, to put this up for a vote and to follow that November timeline. I don't want to see us lose a whole nother year. And, and there can be great public discussion about these issues in the, in the two or three months ahead. And that's plenty of time for people to make up their minds. And, and frankly, for Bixby to take the lead in, in this Tulsa-area region, so to speak, and that, that's kind of exciting to me, and you all ought to be proud. And, and we have some of these game-changing opportunities. So I thank you all for your time and your service and for the time to make a few comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Point I want to make on that, the expiration of this park, is 2021, this fund is gone. What are we going to do? What's the economy going to be at that time? What are people's perceptions going to be at that time? It's the biggest asset we have in our city right now, and I think we need to, to make it permanent. Because, I mean, there's no doubt, it, it takes a lot of money to fund that. And if the money's not there, we're not going to have that quality park right now. I can promise you.
I think at the time when they did, when they did do it permanent, because I was kind of on that, that committee, I think we were thinking that the economy was going to take off a lot more than it did, and our sales tax would be a lot higher, and we'd be able to maintain it. So obviously-
A lot of things will enlarge the park by 25%.
2008 was a, still-
So that, that'd be a separate ordinance that would come later on in the people, right?
The making this permanent, it'd be on the same ballot. We would have four propositions.
So the, the tax that was voted on in 2006, is that what it's come out, or the mileage adjustment?
The, the 2000, both of those were on the 2006.
Okay.
So both of those would be on this ballot to make the, the 2006 parks permanent.
The parks, the park?
The, the sales tax, that .25 that went to the parks now expires in 2021.
Okay.
So since we're doing the debt service and doing both of those, do both of those at the same time, put on the same ballot.
Would it be .5 would be permanent, or the .25?
The .25 would be permanent. And the .15 would also be permanent.
Right.
So it'd be .4.
So it'd be .4 net.
That's just what it is, isn't it? So what about the .1? The .1 goes to the-
It would be permanent as well.
Capital improvements.
So .5 would be permanent?
.5 would be-
Yes, .5, yes.
Okay, that's, okay. And then he lost me. I'm like-
Yes.
So .5 would be permanent?
Yes, .5 would be permanent, correct.
Okay.
In two different propositions.
Of course, I think we may go without saying that, that this will relieve the, the burden on the, the general fund by making this permanent. Certainly, if it fell off, then we would definitely have serious difficulties financing it. And I just have to point out, the, the market gave us a pretty good scare today. I don't know where it ended up, but when it fell 1,000 points today.
Right on the bat.
588.
We know that, oh, 588? Well, it's better than 1,000. But that's, that's what can happen. All of a sudden, the bottom falls out and then we're having to look at freezing salaries and things like that and, and maintain things. So anyway, yeah, this is a pretty simple ordinance. 2167 would make this tax, which is dedicated to parks, permanent effective January 1, 2016 if approved by the council and the voters. And I recommend approval with the emergency clause.
Do we have, Ron wants to say something?
I have just one other question, just to make sure that I understand the numbers and the questions. When we talk about .3%, we're talking about 3 cents tax on $10.
Three tenths of a tax.
On $10.
Yeah, on, yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, that's easy.
So, just to kind of, so, number one, and I, I don't know if we can add all those up that can see, you know, for every dollar, but there's other issues, just to make sure we understand. None of these proposals are increases beyond what we're currently, because we've been paying and have been paying. This is simply repurposed. And for almost .6 of a, of a percent, it's repurposed to be a county tax to make it all go towards the rest here.
I think you could even say that, that it, it's less than what you're paying now because that .5 is not being captured.
.05.
.05 is not being captured.
For now.
We don't know what the county will do.
Yeah, the county will-
Yes, right, yes, sir.
Yes.
One question I have, since these are two separate items, there's a possibility that the .15 could pass and the .25 could not pass. Would it make, or is it possible to put the language where those two are all unproposed?
We've had that conversation. I'll let Patrick get dressed.
And I've advised against that. You can, you have a single-purpose rule or sta, it's a law. And in the, in the one, it's repurposing debt service, that tax. And this one is a se, a separate tax dedicated to parks. Yeah, there's an argument you could do that and, and you might be okay, but-
So I, I have a question, Patrick. If this fails at the polls, we're still on the old timeline then.
Right.
Where then the citizens, maybe in a couple of years, can go, well, hey, we really need the-
Exactly.
I mean, so, so to answer, if it did happen that way, then the recourse is, well, it still goes to 2021.
Yeah.
So you got to do something within a couple of years.
If both of them fail, everything would stay exactly like it is right now.
And it's best to discuss this at the same time as everything else.
Well, if one passed, if the, if the .25 passed, then it would go on perpetuity, forever, theoretically.
It'll repeal.
So hopefully, if one's going to fail, you know. We want the, we want the, we don't want any of them to fail.
They're not gonna, it's gonna have to pass.
I'm a...
But it is confusing, you, when you see the ballot, there's something on the ballot that, I wanna kinda bring this out, cause it confused me when, I mean, you haven't seen the sample ballot yet, has he?
Yeah.
Because one of the, one of the, two of the tax, two of them, almost, to me, when I read them, they almost made it sound like it was a new tax, but they're not. But because we don't own the tax, we can't say we're repurposing the, the part from the, um, from the old county tax, cause we don't own that tax.
County.
So soon as that lapses out, now we are grabbing it. And so when you read it, the proposition, it almost makes it sound like, to me, like it's a, it's a new tax, it's a little confusing to me, I'll be honest.
It'll be the same, same three cents, six cents for ten dollars that Ron.
So I'm saying, I'm saying that because that, that information needs to get out.
Well, we're, we're gonna get out and work this, yeah.
It's like, you look at it and go, wait a second, is this new? And it really, you know, it's a little confusing.
And the ballot's supposed to capture what is in the ordinance, it can't capture what the county, the county tax, which is not in the ordinance in there, so.
Yeah, cause we don't own that tax.
Right.
Yet.
I'm gonna motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Who's second?
John says it's the end of the world.
Guthrie.
Yes.
Loudmout.
Yes.
Yes.
And Easton.
Eastern?
You bet. Yes. Item number...
Oh, don't you have to have emergencies?
Oh, do we have to have an emergency?
Thank you very much.
Yes, okay.
I motion that there's an emergency attached to this.
I second.
Let me second that one.
Okay.
I wanna be right behind you.
Because we don't have enough emergencies.
I just want on record that I'm for the parks.
Good.
No, for parks, for kids playing, I'm not anti-kids, okay?
Hey, they're my backdoor, I gotta have them.
Yes.
Easton.
Yes.
Loudmout.
Yes.
Uh, King.
Yes.
Yes. Item number fifteen. Consider and take action on resolution twenty-fifteen dash nineteen, notifying the Tulsa County Election Board of a nonpartisan election on questions related to the levy and assessment of certain sales taxes within the city, to be submitted to the voters of the City of Bixby on Tuesday, November tenth, two thousand fifteen.
This is the resolution that does require the, the election board, once they're notified properly, to have an election within the City of Bixby on November the tenth. Uh, the propositions are outlined here and, and I would comment that the parenthetical statements that are under each proposition will be, if this is passed, will be deleted from this draft, so it'll simply be the proposition language, uh, so that confusing language may, will go away. It's really intended to be descriptive as to what's contained in there, so it's a quick reference. And, um, seems like there was some other point. This, this resolution also authorizes the mayor to issue an election proclamation, uh, which essentially does the same thing, which we published, uh, and notify the people of an election. And that's been drafted separately, but it's not to be voted on here because the resolution authorizes it. So what'll happen is, if you pass this today, then I will make the, prepare a final draft with the deletions I, I mentioned and I will get the mayor's signature and it'll be served on the election board by Wednesday, so we can have an election. And certainly I've asked the council to approve it as presented.
Discussion? Motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Loudmout.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
King. Yes.
Guthrie.
Yes. Yes. Councilman King has asked to move his agenda item number seventeen next, so let's look at an agenda item.
I don't object.
He was, he was first.
I actually asked him first, so.
Okay. Item number seventeen, discussion of the city manager's compensatory time provision, records and use. Councilman Harold King.
As it's been brought out on, in many, uh, on social media, on actually everybody's attention, we have a, we have, uh, we have a crazy comp time that's been turned into us, which from my understanding was actually supposed to, were supposed to be kept in, by the charter, we're supposed to be kept up to date on, on reg...
Contract, yes.
By the contract on a regular basis, which we wasn't. Which, uh, my first question on that is, um, do we have to accept that? Because if it's not following the contract, why would we have to accept it anyhow, especially from five years back, which to me is like a crazy deal. I mean, how much is it, anybody get the total on it exactly? What is?
Around twenty-eight hundred hours.
Around twenty-eight hundred hours over five years.
Here's the log, it's pretty thick.
Yeah, and it was, it was transferred from notebooks on the handwritten paper, or handwritten on the paper, right? Is that correct?
That's, yeah, so I've seen.
Which we, so we don't have the notebooks, which are original, we have the, the secondary document that was transferred by him, which to me sounds pretty ridiculous too, because I don't know where in any place I've ever heard that you could keep track of your own comp time, nobody else had to, had the right to look at it on a regular basis. And then when you give it to them after five years, that they have to accept it, because that's, that's not even according to this contract, what we agreed to in the beginning.
I don't even think there was any description of the work that was done all these times that I saw.
I don't, honestly, I don't know, I didn't look at all his notebooks, uh...
What I saw, there was no, there was just times. There was no description of work, there was a line for description of work, but there was no time.
Is there, is there people signed up to speak on this, or?
Oh, they're possibly, golly, I haven't looked at this.
Good job, Andy.
I hope anybody that wanted to talk stood up. Uh, this is item seventeen, yes, we have Amy Thompson and Jay Malden have signed up.
And then Andy, you're more than welcome to also come up to the podium.
Ladies first.
Well, first of all, I just wanted to thank you guys also for your service to the community. I've lived here my whole life and I can't imagine living anywhere else. I appreciate your efforts that you're doing to bring, you know, new development in here, but my concern is public safety and I feel like, um, that there's some waste going on and the, my big, my big issue is this comp time log. I don't know of anywhere else you could turn in a comp time log after five years and say, I've acquired twenty-eight hundred dollars and, or twenty-eight hundred hours. And then I also think that that is a big liability hanging out there for the city. When she was saying that there was six hundred thousand dollars approximately left over, that is a, what would it cost for the city to buy out this comp time or pay him for this?
Nothing.
I mean, that would've paid a lot of firemen, you know, that money, or policemen, or fix the roads, or move the rodeo arena. I mean, there could've been so much better use of that money than for somebody to turn in twenty-eight hundred hours after five years and say, oh, yeah. I mean, that just doesn't make good sense to me. I mean, and the fact that he would be allowed to keep that in a, in a spiral notebook and then turn that in after all this time, I just don't know that any, I know, Mr. Easton, you probably would not let somebody that works for you do that. I mean, I don't think my husband would allow somebody to bring a spiral in and say, hey, you know, you owe me a little bit here. Like, that just, I just don't think that that is, you know, following through with the contract, following up on it, keeping track of it, verifying it. I just don't think that's being a good steward of the city's tax dollars. And then, you know, there's other things that we're doing without because of waste and mismanagement of funds like this. So that's really all I have to say.
If I could respond, I, I, as I said, he does not get paid for comp time. He will not get paid for comp time. It is strictly time off.
But he's getting paid now and he's not doing his job and...
Right, comp time's gotta be used somehow.
He is doing his job. Is he getting any extra?
So if, if he left, then that wouldn't be, if he left, he loses comp time?
Right.
Yes.
If he left...
It's not, he, he doesn't get paid for it.
Now, if, if we, and per contract, if we relieved him of his duties, does he get his comp time?
No.
Yes, no, he doesn't get paid for it. It's time that he has to take.
Well...
No, I, there, I can't relieve, relieve him of his duties, I'm not sure what that means.
If we, if we, if we stop, if we go another direction, is that...
Come on, let's just say it.
Okay. If we fire him, then are we liable for that comp time?
No.
No.
Right.
Are you considering the medical leave? Does that change it?
No, I mean, he's, he is by contract, he's allowed to take that time off and, and yes, and there are reasons why he is entitled to that.
But there is no, there is no limit now.
Provision for it.
And there's also no cap as to how much comp time he gets, correct?
Right.
So like, for example, police and fire have a cap, but he doesn't have a cap.
They also, yes.
But didn't Frazier, didn't you say Phil Frazier passed something? Was there something passed before limiting comp time anywhere?
Well, I'm not aware of that.
Do the police and fire get to keep track of their own or does that have to get verified by somebody?
The supervisor of the city manager is the council and if the council did not check on that, then it's that council's problem. This council did and it's, it's come up and it's an issue and they're addressing it.
So that, they did check on it over the course of the five years, then they allowed him to accumulate twenty-eight hundred hours?
I said, I, I don't participate in some of the performance reviews that, that he has, but, but I, obviously I think it hasn't come up before and...
Yeah, cause he showed us the full five years, so it had...
Yeah, I mean, and I, I'll be honest, I don't remember it ever coming up in the reviews.
So my question would be, would we have to, would we even have to accept that if it hasn't been brought up on a regular basis? If it's in his contract that it was supposed to be?
Is that a breach of contract?
It is, it does say that in the contract, regular basis.
Right.
Which I would, I would think would be more than every five years.
Council has not required that and if I had to say it, I'd say the council fell down on his job.
But the, the problem is, does the council, does the council have to ask him every other week, what's your comp time? Does the contract say the council has to do that? Or does the contract say he has to provide timely records? Providing timely records does not mean this council's gotta go to him and say, what's your comp time? Providing timely records means, hey, guys, by the way, this is where I'm at.
Well, you can, you can put it on either one of you. I mean, both, they're both parties to the contract. Council never, to my knowledge, ever required in reports it, it was lost. Do I think they're accurate? Yes, I think he's as honest as the day's long and I don't know why you'd question it.
I'm not questioning it, I'm, I'm looking at the contract.
I, I think, I think somebody giving me five years of comp time on handwritten paper off of notebooks, which is a copy or something that's, that's been written off of something else, would make anybody to actually question, why would you do that? Why would you not have done that on a regular basis?
And, and you are the city attorney, so let's not try to take up for just one entity here, we're looking out for everybody and I'm looking out for the citizens.
Right.
So it's like, okay, if our city manager brings a notebook that says, here you go, guys, yeah, I'm gonna ask a lot of questions, I should. And if he's supposed to be providing timely, timely notes and he's not, then it doesn't outline in the contract who's supposed to ask for it. In fact, it's pretty vague in the contract, really how much comp time, really if, what it says about forty hour a week comp time, I mean, to rack up twenty-eight hundred hours in five years, is it, if he thinks about the city, that's comp time? I don't know, what, where, where are we at here? There's no accountability when it comes to this.
Well, then you, I think you'd need somebody to monitor him all the time and, and the council obviously cannot do that, he's hired by committee.
I wanna make one point that no one's asked is, why does he have so much comp time? You know, the council has all, we know how much hours Doug puts in, so as many hours he puts in, part of his contract says that anything above the forties is comp time. I mean, so the fact that we allowed him to work so much is the reason why he has so much comp time. I mean, that's really the truth though.
It's true, I mean, you're right, but I'll be honest, if I'd realize, and, and probably I'll be the first, you know, I was involved in when, when he was hired, I think the only person up here that was, that was on the council when he was hired, um, you know, I looked at our, but you weren't up to the, to the turn at the time, so we looked at someone else to tell us what to do and, and I, I'll be honest, I didn't read his contract from front to back, I didn't.
Well, the thing, the thing I have is...
I wish I had, but you know.
The problem I have with this is, is, okay, let's, let's say he has been working, he's been getting comp time, wouldn't it, uh, wouldn't it fall upon him somewhere to, to make sure that we knew where he was at there rather than bring it up like, like he has? Because in all honesty, the other problem he has, we have, unless I'm misunderstanding, with all the comp time he has, he'll never have to use his vacation time, he'll never have to use his sick time, so that's piling up and if we do let him go, we have to pay all of that, which, which at this point is a pretty big chunk. And that's one of the things that they had a problem with before when they got rid of, uh, when, uh, when Mickey left, he had a, he had a large amount. And, and so the city's on the, is on the hook for paying for something that just keeps building up. So basically, you got a guy that it's, is growing and growing and, and the, and the thing is, if you don't let him go now and you do later on, it's just gonna cost us more than we can afford then.
I'm sorry, you said, uh, Mickey Webb?
Yeah, didn't he claim quite a bit?
He had, he had comp time for a provision.
No, no, but he, his vacation and all that kinda stuff was a good chunk of change.
It was quite a, it was quite a bit.
I don't remember how much it was.
More than a city this size can really afford to be paying, cause we're talking about, we can't pay for firemen, we can't pay for policemen, but, but now if we let this person go, we got a year's salary, we got all this other stuff that we have to pay. And this, this is like a giant savings account that's building up that we have no control over.
Yeah, and certainly...
Could I, could I make just one quick point as far as scale? What, what you're looking at is ten to eleven hours a week. If, if you, if you multiply that out, that amount over five years is ten, eleven hours a week. So I, just did a little quick math so, so that, whether it's now, we're looking for...
It's fifty hour, it's fifty hour weeks, fifty, fifty-five hours.
So that, that's, that's the scale, the amount, so fifty to fifty-one hours.
But, but the other thing is too, in most cities and most places, when you make as much as he does, they don't even have comp time. It's not even added to it and everybody knows that.
I mean, I'll be honest, I wish, I wish I'd seen the comp time provision in there because, you know, I've had employees, and I hate comp time. I've had the same thing happen to me before and I've had employees come to me with, oh, I've got all this comp time. It's like, and so I had to put a rule in that said, if it's not verified by a supervisor, it's not comp time, it has to be on a monthly basis. So, you know, I've been a bit by this too, but I, I mean, you know, but, but I, I don't, I don't know, you know, contractually, it's, it's kinda whatever the contract says, I don't know. I mean, that's, that's up to our city attorney, yes.
Yeah, I, you know, I wish I had that provision in my contract, but, but I think, to answer your question, yeah, it's, it's, it's the city manager's responsibility also. It's, it falls on both the city council and the city manager to make sure that the contract's invited by.
And let me ask you, if you, if it was you personally, would you feel, would you feel justified to walk in and show us twenty-eight hundred hours of comp time when you haven't brought it to anybody's attention before then? And then feel, and you'd feel like you'd not feel guilty about it at all? I mean...
No, I wouldn't, because I think probably, I probably, I would say, you're welcome for me working that much.
Well, I think the question is, does Patrick work fifty hours a week?
Patrick works a lot more than fifty hours. So if Pat, if Patrick works fifty hours a week, then he would have the equivalent amount of comp time.
Well, the whole thing is, is it's put us all in a bad light that we should never have been put in and, and his job as the city manager is to watch out for us too, to not put you or any of us in this position.
Well, what's the solution?
Well, I agree with you, first of all, it shouldn't, he shouldn't even came back with five years of comp time. I mean, when in the contract it said he should have been keeping us up to date before, then he should have been worried about that. Everybody acts like it's not his respons, his responsibility, but in all honesty, it is. To me, that's just a little bit what I would call greedy. I mean, I don't know any other way to put it, because that's asking for more than what, what a city can actually justify spending when, when we're trying to pay bills like, you know, we've spent a whole weekend trying to figure out how we're gonna move money around and pay everybody, and keep guys on, and, 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 but, you know, here we got, theoretically, could, what, how long could he work, like twenty-eight hundred hours, how many, what is that, a year and a half?
Seventy-two weeks.
Seventy-something weeks.
Yeah.
So, you know, the thing is this, is that when you look at, you, you set the example. A leader sets the example, a leader leads by example. And when you look at public service and being a public servant, it's funny, we've had discussions where, you know, we know what public safety's getting into, I knew what I was signing up for. You know, you get paid, uh, you know, small salary, go protect the people, great, I, I knew that. And there's a lot of times, I did things my own dime, and, you know, whether it's a public, a community event, or speaking at a public group, or civic event, I didn't even think of turning in a comp time or overtime slip. I just thought, hey, that's what I'm doing, okay, that's just what I'm gonna do, and just go take care of it, and not worry about it. It shows to what, like you brought up, I, I, I would more define it as the servant leadership. Okay, we, we work a lot of hours on council stuff, and, and, you know, even though I wasn't there this weekend, you probably had a more peaceful meeting, 'cause I wasn't there, okay? And that's why I told Jared, I'm not going, 'cause I want them to get their discussions out of the way, 'cause we'd still be at the Grand Lake, still be there fighting. But anyway, you know, I was still, and, and we, we, we do a lot of stuff on our own time, we don't mind. That's what we're elected to do. We're always talking to citizens, always on the phone, always answering emails, always, that's fine. Not one time do I think, gosh, I wish I got paid for this, or, you know, it, it goes back to, this is almost like a part-time job that we have for free, or full-time, and yet I don't complain about it one bit. And I wouldn't think of charging the citizens one dime, 'cause that's what we're supposed to do. As a city manager, I think that he has a very good salary, I don't know why he's drawing comp time, I don't get it.
Because previous city council agreed to it.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you, I know, but unfortunately, you know, without getting into, into details, um, when we went through all those people that we let go before, we got into a lot of lawsuits, and they stretched out. And we ended up paying a lot of money that we didn't want to pay, you know, and so, the same thing could happen again. So just because we, you know, we pull the trigger on something, doesn't mean it's gonna go nice and smooth.
And I, I don't know, I, I think, I think Patrick, if, if he's accumulated that much comp time per contract, I, I think we, we are liable for it. I don't, I think even if, if we let him go, or he goes, I think that we are on the hook for that.
Why?
Isn't that how comp time works? When you leave, you get it, correct?
Not according to comp. His provision is to allow him off for that time, not to be paid, and he's, he's paid that account.
If something happens, he'll want it, I can guarantee it, we'll be in another fracas.
I would, I'd be a bit surprised to see, uh...
Well, and the whole thing is this, is if he's, if he's looking after our best interests, this shouldn't even be, we shouldn't even somehow... I mean, it's like this weekend, uh, between Friday and now, we, just the councilman and, and Jared and B, we put in probably twenty hours extra already, I mean, including our drive time and what we did all, I mean, we all did, we, we did all that. And you know what, I, I don't know, like he said, we're not getting paid for it either, you know?
You know, I'm, I may be accused of trying to put a positive spin on, on this for, for the city manager, but, but you got a whole year of comp time, he's got a cop, years worth of comp time, is that what somebody said? You got a city man, huh? You had a city manager do six years' worth of work in five, and he didn't take any of that time off during that period of time.
But he actually did take time, he did take time off, but he did take time off.
You're right, you're right, he took some, but he didn't take a lot, and, and I think it was because he was working all the time. And, and I think another thing that it shows is that maybe you want to hire an assistant or somebody else, so he doesn't have to put in that much time.
You know.
But I know that...
Patrick, would, would it be possible for you to go back and renegotiate the contract by taking the comp time out?
You could, you can ask him for that, and I think it's something to be done.
Pretty much can guess what the answer's gonna be, but is there, is there...
I have no idea what it'd be, honestly.
But could you do that as a city attorney?
I think a cap.
I think the council would have that, it would be the council that would have to do that.
That's exactly right, but I think it's something that you might want to see if he's amenable to a cap or something like that.
Stuff like this, you don't even realize until it happens.
Till it happens.
I mean, that, this is a perfect reason, so, you know, it's a good thing that we caught it now and not five or six thousand hours.
You guys, I gotta admit, how, what would you do if any, any of us do, if he allowed one of the employees of the city to do this? We'd all be really mad about it. Instead, here we are allowing him to do it, and we're acting like, well, it's okay because...
We have a contract, the, the difference, we have a written contract.
But, but my deal is, we haven't done an audit on that, on that time, and that's a lot of money, so I think we, it, it deserves that. I think it deserves an audit, because that's a lot of money, and, and for him to just say that, I mean, so that means that you, that on the vacations that he took, or whatever, that did, did that come off of it all? I mean, I want to make sure, other than just seeing our, I want that spiral notebook up there, and somebody look through it that isn't him, and double-check it to make sure that our city isn't being taken advantage of, because, you know, it's not that, that, I know you trust him, and that's awesome, and that, that shows a lot for what you think of his character, and, and it could be that's exactly what's happened, but, uh, I think when you do this, we gotta look at everything, whether we really have to pay that, since he didn't bring it forward, as, as his contract said. 'Cause it really should be his responsibility to keep us up to date on it, not to show it up at one time and with five, five years of it, you know? And, and I know a lot of people put in a lot of time.
Well, and I, I also have a question too, 'cause I, I think, I think that, I think that, I, I can understand, it, it's in the translation, it's how you translate that clause of the contract, is the council asking, or is he asking? Well, here's, here's my thing, is this, and my question is, when did it go from spiral notebook to Excel spreadsheets?
The day that I asked for them.
When we asked for it?
I believe they were, I honestly believe they were being kept all along, but I don't...
The Excel spreadsheets, or the, the law?
I haven't actually seen the actual Excel spreadsheet.
See, if we don't have two signatures on something, there's no accountability. There's nothing wrong with him coming in, if, if we're gonna give him comp time, if it's in the contract, filling out the comp slip, just like any other employee has to do, turn it in to HR, and they sign it.
Actually, actually, for us, it'd probably be better if he turned it into us.
Verification, well, at least a verification, or turn it into Pat, whatever it is. But get, get a verification of two signatures and date, and say, yeah, that's when he turned it in. This is, and that way, then, just like with every other city employee, he's held to the exact same standard.
Yeah, I think, I think this is a problem of having the, in that, in essence, the CEO, do you, I mean, who's gonna ask the President of the United States for his comp time records?
But, but that's the problem, he's not the President of the United States, and he's acting like it.
I don't think so, but, uh, the bottom line is, I think that the contract could have been written in a way, so there were, were checks and balances for that.
We, we missed that one.
And they aren't in there.
But I do think that, uh, that an audit of those, of that is, is not unreasonable.
Could you renegotiate it? Can I motion to have Patrick renegotiate the contract?
I don't... That, that, that needs to be the council that does that. I, 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 I think if that's what you want to do, Richie, the council needs to do that.
Well, and the other thing too, on this, is, since he's already got so much comp time, he's already using it. We haven't got anything to slow that down, or, or then, then if he's, if he's on comp time, he, he needs to not be, he needs to...
Can, can we give him direction not to work over forty hours a week?
Actually, I think at this point, if he's not here, then he needs to not be here, and that means he needs not be doing, conducting city business with, with other people too, because it shouldn't be up to him whether he can come and go. If he's, if he's got a reason for being off, and it's been verified, then that should be what we go by, that he needs not be conducting the city business. He needs to be separate from it till he's able to come back, if he is gonna come back, if we allow that.
I just want to put in one footnote, uh, on the way that he kept his comp time with the notebooks. Doug does everything with notebook. When we go to a meeting downtown, or whatever, he's got a notebook that he's writing everything, you know, I just, I, I don't have a problem with the notebook.
But that's his actual verified record, so that's what he needs to turn in, not his secondary handwriting and...
He brought in, uh, the two cases.
Right, but that's what...
Full of notebooks that he said anybody can look at, so, I mean...
That's what we need to go on with on that.
Is there, is there a way, 'cause Patrick, and, and I, I understand what you're saying, John, that we, Mayor, excuse me, that we have to, we, the council has to be the one to direct, or to, to ask for that, but Patrick is the council attorney, correct? And we're asking for a legal contract, we're asking for renegotiation of a legal contract.
No, I, I think the way to do it is, is we get an executive session with him, and we look him in the eye and tell him our problem, and ask him if this is something he would consider doing. I, that's, that would be my approach, I would just,
I think that's straightforward.
Sit down and look the man eye to eye, and say, Doug, this, this is what we're looking at, and...
And certainly, I, I mean, I can do it at your direction, if that's what you don't want.
I, I don't think that ought to be farmed out.
But we're not talking about renegotiating the entire contract, it's pretty straightforward.
I'm not being mean, we farm out everything else around here.
I definitely think we don't need to hire any help, because if he's sitting in that many hours, we've already hired him a negotiator to do part of his job. We've hired a PR firm to do part of his job, so I definitely don't think hiring more help is gonna be the answer.
But those things are really, those are part of his job, he's not the economic developer.
Yeah, we're, we're... In, in the contract, it is part of his job, is negotiations.
Negotiations, but not economic development.
Well, negotiator then.
Let's get to that, we got another agenda item on that.
Well, I, actually, then, I think, in the meantime, I do think that we need to go to an outside source and audit it.
That's another agenda item, but, well, I mean, that's, you, you can discuss it.
Mr. Malvin?
Okay. Can't take the action today.
I think you signed, you signed up for this.
I know, I know the hour's late, um, I don't know what all I can add, other than to tell you that, uh, I know that state employees, for example, can only carry over so many hours of annual leave or vacation time, you get in a use it or lose it situation, I'm sure that you guys are familiar with that, um, or with that concept. We have to honor our contracts, if we didn't write a good one, then we didn't write a good one. Um, I think if there's one person in city government who, no one should be surprised that they work more than forty hours a week, it'd be the city manager. It's our chief administrative officer, it's, it's not unrealistic to be of an opinion that he's gonna work more than forty hours a week. Uh, with regard to documentation, as an auditor, I can tell you, I like contemporaneous documentation. Perhaps going forward, we can do away with comp time, on the next contract, we can remove it. If we're, if not, then there needs to be contemporaneous documentation, and what I mean, that's contemporaneous, meaning at or near the time of occurrence. Perhaps a bi-weekly or a monthly time sheet, and if there's gonna be an accrual of comp time, perhaps there could be some modicum of explanation as to why generated that. For example, working on the low water dam project, or a meeting with this group, or that group, or attending this conference, or attending this seminar. Whatever it is, so that, so that there's, exists on one, on one sheet of paper, rather than having to, you know, uh, bounce around from box to, storage box to storage box. To have on one sheet of paper where you can look at and go, I see the hours, and I have some, some idea as to what, what occurred to generate this accrual of comp time. I am, I, I have a question, if I may ask a question, does anybody else, any other administrative position in the city generate comp time? Or is it just limited to the city manager?
Not that I know of.
I'm sure, I'm sure the city attorney, the city planner, the, the city engineer, and assistant city manager, director of public works, the city treasurer. Uh, there, there's a lot of people, I'm sure...
Police and fire chiefs?
Uh, yeah, thank, I'm sorry, I didn't, thank you, thank you.
Brian, Brian's back there.
Uh, yeah, but, both chiefs, uh, you know, there's a lot of people who work more than forty hours. I think it'd be better, go, on a go-forward basis, to say, this is what the job entails, it entails this, that, and the other, and it pays X. And you, you're okay with that, or you're not? And of course, uh, you know, health, uh, health benefits, uh, expense reimbursements, but I think comp time, like clearly, it's presented a situation that not everybody's comfortable with.
Well, can I say something too?
Absolutely, it's a counselor.
As much comp time as we had on this, and, and, and I don't know, maybe I'm wrong on this, but over this last weekend and this week, and we've got more done without, without his help, and we're paying him comp time for all the extra work that he did to get, a lot of this stuff, we've been trying, we just smoked through, honestly. I mean, honestly, I've seen more movement in the city just here recently than, than I don't know I've ever seen. And then, and I gotta tell you, it's kind of nice. Yeah, but I, I don't, I, I, I don't want to knock the man's methodology. Well, and I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm probably...
And actually, actually, go along with that, I mean, we have seen some good movement, and there's been things I've been wanting to get done in Ward Four that have gotten done. And hey, Saker looks freaking amazing right now, I mean, you guys did a fabulous job. I do have a, a question, though, when, in regard to, and it's something that I'm thinking about, in regard to renegotiation or approaching him, did this council not approve a two-year extension of the contract?
Yes.
So will we be able to even go to him in that two years?
Yes.
He doesn't have to agree to anything, I mean, the bottom line is, it's, it's gonna be, have to be mutual.
I just didn't want to get us in trouble.
Well, and the other thing too, I, I think that's something, maybe that's our executive session, but I think we need to talk about, if, if he's not here, that he's not here, that, that we have, we've got a go-to guy here, and that's who's doing the work, and, you know, until he's able, or can, whatever it is, come back to whatever, you know, or whatever time he has planned, then, until then, that we, we keep it that way, because that's the one thing we can't...
Well, we know he's not adding comp time now.
That's exactly the thing, I don't want him adding any more comp time, oh my God.
Do we?
Uh, and of course, we don't know, I don't know when he's gonna come back, we, we can't ask for an executive session with him until he gets back. But...
But we can, as a council, we can at least decide whether he's, whether he's involved in our business at all, at all or not. If he's, really, he shouldn't be, and, and that's, you know, I think that's, that's my opinion. If, if, it's kind of like, you would not let other employees here just decide when and where they come and go, and I think it ought to be the same with him.
Counsel is, is his supervisor.
Did, did he already sign his contract, his two-year extension, is that signed?
Yes.
The ink's dried.
And it would, it would have continued on anyway.
Anyway.
It, it, it's just a more of a guarantee.
Yeah, unless we, unless we were determined to...
And, and that's, that's one of the reasons why I frankly came up here in public and voted no, because there's a lot of, there's, on the contract, there's a lot of issues there, and I just, you know, but we're, we're here, and this is, we're moving forward, and that's what we gotta do. I think Mayor has a good point, if we go to him collectively, and, and when he comes back and, and deal with this immediately, 'cause this, this is terrible, this is, this is terrible.
Actually, I'm, I'm very disappointed in it, I just, I, I don't, I just can't even imagine somebody asking for that, and really feeling like they felt good about walking away, knowing they, they, they threw twenty-seven or twenty-eight hundred hours in front of us like that.
So that was how many weeks, seventy? Well, we don't know that he's gonna take the whole seventy weeks.
We don't know he's not.
We don't know he's not.
God's be optimistic.
Try to put a positive spin on it.
I don't think he will.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I could offer just, just one comment, and then I'll...
Gladly, go for it.
One final comment, I'll, I'll have, and then I'll vacate the podium. I, I heard a comment earlier about, well, perhaps we should limit the, or instruct the city manager to just work forty hours per week, and I...
That doesn't work.
Well, if...
I, you know, I guess it would.
I can see how that can become problematic.
I could see that, because, uh...
Sorry, I gotta leave.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Stuff, stuff will go on. More calls, you get more calls, you get it nice.
My thing with it would be, like, on the comp time, I can see it if you're in the middle of a meeting, but I, I'm kind of curious as to, okay, what is the definition of that? In other words, if you're at a reception, if I'm at a chamber reception, is that comp time?
Or is that time you can draw comp time on?
You know, because to me, to me, if you're at a reception like that, that's not really comp time. If I'm at a meeting, that's, you know, and that's why, it should have been reviewed. I mean, I'm sitting here kicking myself for not reading to that thing closer, I'll be honest, I just, I, I mean, our city attorney at the time went through it, and, and advised us, and Alex, good, and said, okay, and then everybody thumbs stuffed it, and stamped it, and...
I think you and Mayor were on the council then, weren't you?
No, uh, you weren't.
I was, barely.
What's an unusual provision for a management person?
I gotta admit, just being on here not very long, I could see how easy it'd be to, 'cause you're trusting a lot of other people's input.
Because you get inundated with so much stuff, and it's like, you know, but anyway, but now, I'm kicking myself, but I don't know, and I was gonna say, I don't know what you can do about it. You've got to, you know, unless there's something in the contract that, that Flatt says he's supposed to give us reports, and he, and he never did, maybe we can get out that way, I don't know.
Reports regularly.
And, and I, but I do think that there ought to be some type of an audit on, on the, and see, you know, kind of where they came from.
On, on that point, as, in, in continuation of my final remark tonight, um, I, I'm wondering, I mean, my understanding is that we have an external auditing or accounting firm that reviews our, our books, our financials on an annual basis. I'm just wondering if this would fall within the scope of such an audit? Um, I, I've talked with a, a couple of CPAs, and, and I think the consensus is that, that it depends on what the scope of the audit is. So I'm wondering, I know if, if, if it were me, you know, being an auditor and having auditor's mentality, the first thing I'm gonna want to look at is audit reports, and see, has anybody addressed this in the past, and said that this is, through an evaluation of internal controls, has they, have any, has this been identified as a, an area of weakness? And has any recommendation for correct, corrective action, uh, been made a part of an audit report?
I don't think the auditors have ever seen that.
Was the auditors that we have now, were they hired by him? I want to make sure that that's not who's doing the...
With that being said, I, 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 just, if, or, that's all I have for you tonight, are there any, any questions or concerns that you would like to address to me? If not, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, bud.
Exhausted, that one?
Uh, I'd like to say something, my name is Frank King, I live in Dixie. I worked for the federal government as a salaried employee for over thirty years, and I can count on two hands the number of hours I had comp time. And if I ever did have comp time, I didn't, I asked for it, it was offered, and somebody had to authorize it, like...
To be recorded.
To get on TV.
This is your ten minutes of fame.
Okay, for all you TV fans, my, my name is Frank King, I live in...
My name is Frank King, I live in Bixby. I was a, a salaried federal employee for over thirty years, and I had very little comp time. I didn't look for it, I didn't ask for it, it was offered when they thought I did something a little more. When I worked twenty-four or twenty-six hours in a row, some, once in a while. But my question here is, who authorized his comp time? Somebody has to authorize it, somebody has to sign for it, or sign on some chit or some sheet.
That's the problem, there's not, nobody authorized.
Okay, so-
It was, it was just in the contract, it says, he can accrue comp time, that's basically what it says.
He can accrue it, that's, that's how it works?
Right.
Okay. Obviously, you have the wrong job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and I, and-
Yeah, please. Ms. Altman.
I'm Victoria Altman, and you guys aren't gonna like what I have to say. You wanna know who did it? The buck stops with you guys. Maybe not with you, maybe not with you, maybe not with you, but whoever originally did it, that's when it happened. And you, if you're working it for us as a citizen, it was your responsibility, when you came up, to look that. If this man brought you a thousand journals, Harold, have you read it every one of those journals? If you really wanna know what this man has done, and if you really wanna respect me as a citizen, then pick him up. I know how hard this man has worked. He's worked very hard. If he does go to a chamber deal, he's representing you as a city. He's representing me. Do I want somebody who's going to represent the city and just leave and go, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm out of here? I think each one of you need to say, the buck stopped with the city.
And actually, that's what I'm doing, a lot of the stuff that you're hearing-
But no, you continue to blame him. Now, maybe it was his fault too, but let me tell you. He's done a very good job. There are things that every single one of us, in our lifetime, we don't do a good job. We could admit our mistakes, admit your mistake, and go on. If you wanna talk to him, talk to him. But I think it's getting a little bit redundant, going back and forth, going, his fault, our fault, his fault. But I don't hear too much, our fault, I hear a lot, his fault, his fault. He has the journals, read them if you want to, seek out an attorney if you choose to, audit him if you want to.
Move forward.
But just move forward.
No, and I agree with you, that's-
Thank you.
And, and, let me say this, I, I'm, I'm coming in at the back end of some things, and there are probably things that I haven't seen that he has done, and that I, I probably should stop for a minute, and thank you for that. And I know at a legislative level, level, that he, I've been told that he's, he's very well respected there, that I, I'm all for. But what I will not say is, I think this is okay, 'cause I don't, I think that he's been in the government area longer than I have by any means, and he ought to know that this would raise eyebrows for anybody. That's my opinion.
Well, the contract goes two ways, so, you know, we signed it as a council, or at some point, also.
Yeah.
Like she said, it, contracts both sided, so, can't blame one person.
I missed it.
It's in his contract, you can't blame the guy for, if he has it to use it, I mean, but we know there's a problem, obviously. How do we move forward to fix it or change it? I mean, now it's, we know about it, before, we didn't realize it, so.
I, I think you could audit this thing till the cows come home, but I, Doug worked an extraordinary amount of hours.
There was no doubt about that.
And, 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 we didn't watch the contract or the comp time, I don't know whose, whose responsibility it is. I, I don't think there's anything that we can do going backward. But he worked an enormous amount of hours.
And he's also the second highest-paid city manager?
No, he's not, he's probably the- What did Brookenberry get hired at? I, well, last time I checked, he was fourth. Last time I checked, he was fourth. But, but that, it doesn't matter, the, the comp time's the issue here.
The average salary for a city manager of a million people is one twenty-nine a year. The, the, the low end is about eighty-nine thousand. I believe that is actually a national number.
Cause OML has a great report, and we can get every list.
Yeah, I've, 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 I had that report, and I had it last year, and I thought, I thought Doug was at about fourth or fifth, but, but, but that's not the point. We, we, maybe we could hire a city attorney for twenty-five thousand dollars less. It's, it's the comp time for why, city manager for twenty, maybe we could, but, we gotta, we gotta keep our eye on the ball here. The comp time is our issue.
I wanna address something really quick, too, that Ms. Altman brought up, and I, first wanna say thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
You know, you and I, you and I have had a lot of conversations, and I value you and your, your passion for our city. One of the things I, I wanted to say is, you know, in, in saying the, the buck stops here with us, that's one of the reasons why I voted no. Because, and, and, and I can look you in the face and come to you and tell you why I voted no, and I have. I've, I've told you some of my concerns, you've told me some of how you feel, and, you know, we, we're still friends, and so I, I appreciate that. One of the things that, of that clause, it says, you know, the, the employer recognizes the employee must devote a great deal of time to outside normal office hours. So for example, normal outside office hours, hanging out with us at night, you know, when we have council meetings, that's outside of the, of the, of the, of the eight-to-five spectrum, okay? Or, or whenever he comes in. See, that's, that's one of the issues is, we as a council have not really, we don't know when he comes in or when he leaves. Is that our job to micromanage him? I'm gonna say no. Is it our job to keep him accountable? Yes, and there's two separate things there that, that go with that. But he's gonna have to work outside business hours of the city, to the extent the employee is authorized to establish an appropriate work schedule. So that's his job, to establish the appropriate work schedule, so that falls on him. Per contract, it is his job to provide and to establish the appropriate work schedule for himself. Per contract. So when you take a look at that, and then say, well, then, he establishes his work schedule and to take compensatory time off as he deems appropriate during normal business hours. Furthermore, the use of such comp time shall not be charged against his accrued vacation and, and/or sick leave. Employee also agrees to, uh, provide, the employee agrees to provide us with timely reports of employees' activities on a regular basis. So nowhere in there does it say, we set the work schedule, and nowhere in the contract does it say, we go to him and ask him for the comp time. Within that contract, it says, you set your work schedule, and you come forward to give us those in a, in a timely manner. Now, should we have seen this? Yes, ma'am, you're absolutely correct. And, but, but there it goes back to what the contract says. The contract says, that monkey's on his back, not ours.
And why didn't you call it earlier? And, and I know you weren't here earlier, nobody was watching earlier.
Well, you know, when his contract was renewed the last time, we knew before, before we renewed it, he told us he was gonna take comp time on. And not, not one of us, not one of us-
I did ask how much he had.
Oh, you did?
That's where all this started from, is because I started asking-
Did he, did he tell us that night?
No.
No.
No, it took us almost another three or four weeks, that's why now I'm a little frustrated, because honestly, if I'd known that, I might, I, I would've do, I would've voted differently.
Did he know?
I don't know.
Maybe he didn't know, I don't know.
I don't know.
He may not have, with all the drawings.
He may have had to go back and, and add up his own time to figure out even what he had, I don't know.
To me, that's just a, you know, that'd be a very important thing for me to know before I vote for you.
Well, okay, the buck, the buck stops here, as Victoria would say, so I think it's-
Get him, Victoria!
I like that, the buck stops.
Is that to resign?
Victoria. I think, I think when Doug gets back, we just, we, we need to sit down, and let's have an executive session and see what happens.
Yep.
Okay, now we're gonna go back to another agenda item, I guess we're done with that one. Thank you, Victoria. You need to come all the time.
We need words of wisdom.
Words of wisdom.
Actually, I wanna say thank you to also Victoria, Amy, Frank, Jay, every one of you citizens got up and said something. It's valued, we're here for you guys. We're here for you all, and actually, you have a cross-representation of your wards up here, you know? So, thank you for coming and being a part of the process, and thank you, Harold, for bringing it up.
Let's go back and grab item number sixteen from the agenda. Discuss, consider, and take action on the contract of retained services of city negotiator Michael Bates, Councilman Stewart.
Thank you, sir. You know, we, we have been, and I'll be honest, I don't even know, I just, this was something that, using this contract service was something that I, I was against to begin with. Shocked everybody in the audience, I was against something. But, well, here we are, we hire somebody to do a job, starting in February. We're now here in August, in arbitration, with one entity. I don't know where, the other. But I, I think that we have some problems. And one of the issues that I have is, same thing with his particular time sheets, I, I got a copy of his time sheets. And we have some issues here, 'cause some of these overlap. Like on one time sheet, we have work done on, one time sheet, we have, on the overlap, zero, two, twelve, fourteen. So we have that, we go back to fourteen, we pick up in fifteen, which is this past year. It seems like it's just this ongoing thing, of where do we begin, and where do we end? And now we're at a twenty thousand dollar bill, outsourcing this negotiation, which I firmly believe, and I still stand behind this, that we have a city manager and a city attorney that can pay good money to negotiate with our police and fire, and having a negotiator, what I, I believe having a contracted negotiator has generated an adversarial relationship with our public safety professionals. And because this contract can be brought up by council, you know, it's at our will, uh, when I was, I've talked to Patrick a while back about it, is this something that, you know, is it a long-term, when it hooked in for two years, or, or whatever? I, I firmly believe that it is, you would get more done if you had, if you had our city administration do what they get paid to do, sit down with the public safety professionals, and negotiate with them face-to-face, instead of outsourcing this. We have something else we're outsourcing. And it seems like it's a common theme in our city, in our city government. Let's just outsource it, that's so much easier. Let's just outsource it, let's just outsource it. We have professional people on staff that can take care of this. But no matter where you fall on, on the support of the public safety, I'm pretty sure everybody up here on this council supports public safety, I know they do. So, we're going down a path that I think is problematic, because there's no end in sight. We're now at twenty thousand dollars. Twenty thousand. We have to say enough's enough. We contracted you to do a job, you haven't done it yet. And that, to me, that's not a good use of money, when we're talking about percentages, and, and a few thousand here, a few thousand there. My goodness, with that twenty thousand, we probably could've had a deal done with both entities. And so, when I talk to the people in my ward and in my district, and when I visit with people, there isn't too many citizens that are for contracting this out. Here we go back to, well, the citizens don't know. I'm sorry, we work for the citizens. We belong, we are elected by the citizens, and this city belongs to the people. The citizens want to see our city administration sitting down with the police and fire, forming the relationship, and getting this contract done. That's what they wanna see. And so, I'm, I'm coming up here saying, you know, I think we need to go another direction, and, and, that's just what I'm here to talk about.
So, you're, you're suggesting terminating Mr. Bates now?
Yes, sir.
Well, Richie, I love you and all, but boy, that's kinda like jumping off a horse in the middle of the string. It's not changing horses, it's like you're jumping off the horse in the middle of the string. I mean, we're, aren't we, aren't we pretty close to the end on all of these? From what I've been told, I thought some of them were, I, I, I cannot support terminating this man now. I mean, I, I, we do have a fiduciary duty to our citizens. Sure, we want a, we want a good contract with our, with our firefighters, and with our police officers, but we've got a hundred other people here.
I think, I think this is, this has worked adversely to what, if you think about it, we started in February, we're here in August. This could've been done with, I, I guarantee you, this could've been done way back in March. We could've had a deal done, we would've known what we're funding. And I'm, it just seemed to me that there was a, a coordinated effort, I don't know from who or how, to just to drag this out, and keep dragging it out, and keep dragging it out. We have to say enough's enough.
How many hours does he have in this?
No, Betty, do you know, how many hours are we at? See, we have here, here, I'll, I'll pass this down, but you know, here we have, we have a, a phone call, thirty-minute phone call, forty-seven bucks. We're paying ninety-five an hour for a negotiator to negotiate against our public safety professionals. You know, we have, here, Harold, we have-
You're paying ninety-five an hour?
You know, that, that's, that's a lot of money.
It's two hundred hours.
Practice, practice earlier in a city's life, when Phil Frazier was here, he negotiated those contracts, I believe.
My question, do you have two hundred, did you have two hundred hours to be able to do that?
No, and I don't have the expertise.
And you know what, but Councilman Lautermilk, I don't believe it would've taken that long if we had-
But even, even a hundred hours, I mean, or even fifty hours, I mean, I think the reason we went down that road is because Patrick just didn't have the time.
But if, if, if the city manager is hired to, to negotiate on behalf of the city, that's what he needs to be doing.
Well, I could see the city manager doing it, that's true.
And, and Patrick is the city attorney.
I mean, before, it was the city manager and the city attorney, is, is who always did it.
It was mostly the city attorney, and it was Phil Frazier, and he worked by the hour.
But you know, well, I want to make-
So we were paying him by the hour as well.
Yeah, that's true.
One point on that, too, looking back at the last couple agendas, the city, that's her, uh, the city, gosh, it's getting late. City manager's contract. You know, there was stuff in there that we didn't catch, and we didn't know, because we didn't know. Bates was also, part of that was hired to go through those contracts and check them out, and see if there's anything that shouldn't be in there, or anything that should be checked on market value. That was another part of that, too, was, if the firemen wanna raise, or the policemen wanna raise, what is the market for those? We don't know. How are we supposed to know that? Does the city manager know that? No.
It's for HR services, that's what we're-
Yeah, so how do we know whether we give the policeman a, a raise, or the fireman a raise, or how much do we give them? Are we underpaying them? I don't know. How do we, does anyone here know that? We don't. So part of this, when, the, the reason of this partially was to go out there and look at all that stuff. And that was kinda where we came from.
He knows all that stuff, yeah.
That was kinda how all that started. So just to get a little bit of background on that, there's more to just the negotiation part of that.
So when we get this bill, the labor relations consultant, and we get a bill, he's also doing other work besides negotiation.
Yeah, he said that, I remember we used to talk about that in a little minute.
We passed something in here from HR?
Yeah, we did. And so he, he must've missed the city manager's contract of comp time.
Well, we, maybe we should hire him the rest of that.
I do, God, if he could do something, I, I'd bring him in today.
The thing is this, is that, is that this, to me, the citizens don't like the use of funds. This could've gone to supporting, to getting to those, some of those deals that we're close to getting. That money could've been better spent doing that. If we want to look at other contracts and do market research, it's not that hard to call another city and have them fax it over to you, and save that money, and find the research. I really think that there is a better way to spend our money than on outsourcing negotiations against our public safety professionals. That's my view, I'm sure it's not shared unanimously, but, uh, I motion that we terminate the contract and go a different direction.
I don't think against, I don't like the word against. He was negotiating with, we're not, we're not negotiating against any of our unions, against any of our people, we're just trying to conduct business, I, I don't like the word against.
Right, but that's how it appears to be, though.
I don't think anyone's against any public safety.
Never appeared to me, but, but, but that's, yeah, I, I don't like the word against, we were negotiating with-
But it's, it seems like he's made it adversarial. Or not him, I don't know who's pulling the strings, but I'm just saying, that's what it appears to be, using this negotiator. It has created an adversarial relationship that we did not need, and didn't have to have.
Well, he did it last year, and it worked out right.
I did, I have picked up on the adversarial part of it. I did, I have picked up on the adversarial part of it.
As, as a member of the union, you're here as a member of the union, correct?
Yeah.
Would you mind speaking?
No. Everybody knows. Ryan King, President of IFF Local Point Six Fifty-One. You know, and yes, I've negotiated with Mr. Bates two years now. The discussions that, like, the process that we've had with him, as a, uh, in contrast to previous years, yes, used to, we previously negotiated with, uh. Frazier. Frazier. But, and he was, you know, that was basically because the city didn't have its own attorney. And then once the city got their own attorney, then we negotiated one year with Patrick. Went fine. Didn't have any issues.
Frazier had a lot of experience in that.
Right. Didn't have much, you know, problems with Frazier. Everything went fine. The contract, for the most part, rolled over. It's only if new language was brought in, was, you know, Frazier's expertise in having an attorney look at new language. But all the current language was fine. Nobody had any problems with anything. Even near Patrick, we didn't change.
There were a lot of language problems, that and police. There, there are things that could've been caught a long time ago, but.
They got brought up later and later. You know, and even coming back to compensatory time. I mean, we were probably the only other department in the city that had compensatory time in their contract. And that was if the firemen worked on a holiday, in lieu of being paid overtime for working a holiday, and it's only a cap, it only occurred on the guys that worked that particular day, they were given comp time to use at their discretion for time off later.
Right.
Mr. Bates brought that up as an issue in our contract a couple years ago, that it wasn't technically compensatory time, because we weren't getting it at time and a half. We were only getting it at straight time, twenty-four hours.
Good catch on this part.
So, you know, that's fine. We've had that discussion before. And during that negotiation process, they wanted to change it. The guys weren't for it. We didn't have a problem with it. But he had a problem. His proposal was that it became a liability on the city for that amount of leave time to be on the books. And so during the negotiation process, when we settled with the city before arbitration, that was one of what we considered, uh, concession to the city was to give up the comp time article in lieu of their new language. So we got one side over here, the city got one side over here, and we settled on an agreement. I think the problem that you have, and it's the problem that we've had forever, cuz ever since I've been doing this, I've been here sixteen years. I've been negotiating the contracts for a little over ten. Ever since we've been doing it, we've been asking for at least a minimum of one representative off of the council to sit in the meetings, so that you get direct involvement in what is talked about. So you're only hearing one side of the story. And that's the problem I think we have, is you're not hearing the whole story. I'm not saying that he's coming back and, you know, completely misleading anybody, but you're not hearing all of the discussions that go on there, and you're only hearing one side of it. And the city has always been against allowing, every time we've asked, allowing for a counselor to at least come and sit in the meeting. They don't have to talk, they don't have to have any part of the discussions, but they can at least sit over there and hear the exchanges that go on, and to understand exactly what the issues are, from what we have and the issues that they have.
You don't talk to counselors anyway?
I can talk to counselors on a limited ability of what we have to do with. I can't go in and tell a counselor exactly what is.
I think in the council handbook, you can approach certain people.
Yeah, but I've seen pictures of you with counselors, so.
Well, pictures doesn't mean they're talking about.
I think in that handbook, they may be the counselor.
No, no, wait a minute. If, if you're talking about me, if you're talking about me, that doesn't mean, if you're talking about me, you can say, I've seen you in a picture with Councilman Stewart.
Sure.
So you can say that, instead of saying, I've seen you with counselors.
I've seen you in a picture with counselors.
Okay, that does not mean we're discussing.
All right.
We're out of hand here.
No, we're not, we're gonna, no.
Okay. But that doesn't mean.
No. Finish. We're not gonna get out of hand here.
No.
That's, that's, that's all I had to say, that.
You, you can continue.
I think that the council needs to have more of an involvement, just same way with any of the contracts that go on. I don't think the council understands the whole scope of the contract, and what we're talking about here is, in our contract and in any contract, as you go back, and there's history in there. And for when people change up here, and everything else, things that we negotiate in those contracts are from previous times that continue to roll over. And what people tend to forget is why those items were in there. And so, you need to understand what's in the contract, and I think that's a problem that a lot of them don't understand, cuz most people don't have the time to sit down and read the whole contract. But those items are discussed at length in those meetings, and you can get both sides of the story.
Question, when Frazier was doing, conducting the negotiations, did a councilman sit in on the negotiations then? That was a total, whole new administration. What was?
None of the ones that are involved in, that a councilman ever sat in on.
Is there, is there something that says we can't do that? That we can't have one of our councilmen sit in there and not say anything?
Well, um, there's a labor practice that I keep hearing.
I can't remember the wording of it, but it's dear to corporate authority, and, uh, but one counselor is not. I'd have to look at that.
Yeah, I mean.
Closer.
But I know other cities do have city counselors that say.
You know, we've been talking about trying to bridge the divide between our city and our employees, and it could be him, we could change off.
Yeah, you would lose continuity there, I think, but.
And that would be one guy.
One person? Well, maybe we could set that up, then, could we? I mean.
But your concern is, is that Bates is not giving the, the straight story to the council?
I mean, I don't know what he gives them. I mean.
Maybe it's not Bates, maybe it's anybody. You just don't.
Right, I mean, I, I don't know what he tells them, cuz it's an executive session.
Well, I gotta say, in our meetings.
But I, I think that is a perception.
Basics of just bits and pieces. We're not, we're not able to get a full scope of what's going on in there, and that'd be one way to settle it.
I, it's obviously a tactic, but.
Proactive, that's.
Is there something in the handbook against that?
Against what?
Sitting in there, or, or taking photos? I had to get it in there before you hit the hammer.
Harold, I call it.
I call it heroic, just for the implication there. I had seen the picture on your Facebook.
I don't wanna talk about that. We've got business conduct here.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
That's all I got, unless the council has any other questions about.
Okay.
Thank you, Ron.
Okay, so the question before us is, do we want to finish out these negotiations with Michael Bates, our negotiator, or do we wanna let him go now?
I'm gonna agree with you, John, that I think, I mean, I don't know if I did it for next, next time around.
I think it's a big discussion next time.
I think that, I don't wanna see us jump off the middle of a horse.
I would like to motion, and if I don't have support for the motion, that's fine. I'd like to motion we terminate the contract.
Can we do a motion with the?
I'd like to, I haven't never said anything on this, is. It would be like, I mean, you're, you're in an arbitration with one party, and it would be like being in a trial, and right before the jury decides, you fire your attorney, and you don't hire another one. Um, it would be no different than that.
I, I have to at least agree with that. I think you've got one person that's been through the negotiation process all, all the way through, and through the arbitration, and it's now in a briefing period, and he's the only one that, that was there for the whole thing. And so, just to terminate the contract in the middle of what in essence is a trial, I think would not be to the city's benefit.
I can still motion, though, right?
And most judges, most judges would not allow that either. Yes, you can make a motion, Richie, according to the agenda.
Okay, I motion we terminate the contract of the negotiation services of, uh, I wanna be legal here. Labor Relations Consulting Services.
Effective immediately.
Effective immediately with our, with our public safety, uh, unions.
In a second.
Stewart.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Voughtamout.
No.
Guthrie.
No.
Easton.
No.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, we have, uh, we've had our assistant city manager's report. Any, any new business?
Brilliant.
Seeing none, we adjourn this meeting of Dixby City Council at eleven oh five PM. We open up the Dixby Public Works Authority Meeting at eleven oh five PM. Let the record show that all councilors are present. Do we have any discussion on the consent agenda for the Dixby Public Works Authority Meeting?
Bye, Tony. Come by and have lunch again, brother.
Do we have any discussion on the consent agenda for BPWA?
Bye, Frank.
Do we have a motion on the consent agenda for the BPWA?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay.
Bye, Amy.
Stewart.
Yes.
Voughtamout.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Guthrie. And Easton.
Yes. New business, seeing none, we adjourn the Dixby Public Works Authority.